Call to order pursuant to ORS one ninety-two point six ten to one ninety-two point six nine IV. The board director's work session, Clackamas Fire District number one, Monday, January nine, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is being recorded pursuant to ORS one ninety-two point six fifty. Public comment at this time, at this time, I'm calling for any statements from citizens regarding district business. Ariel, do we have anybody?
We did not.
Not yet, okay. If during the meeting, someone who did not have a chance to sign up prior to the meeting and has a public comment, please use the raise hand function at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in, you can select star nine to indicate a raised hand and star six to mute and unmute. So introduction this time by our chief Nick Brown.
Great, thank you, Marilyn. President, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm excited about the opportunity which I have today to bring forward to you the, some, some information on the levy topic which we ended discussing. The Fire District has done a, a very good outreach program that, that started in November and, and has just kind of built to this point to where we're going to be presenting to you some, some data from DHM. But we've done anything from community engagement through town halls. We've had four town hall meetings at our, at our fire stations to the open house slash town hall that we did on Saturday in Oregon City, which was, was very successful. We've engaged the community through a qualitative study, a qualitative survey, and then a quantitative study, which is what DHM is going to present to you, which, which reflects a, 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 a lot of support for this moving forward. I'm excited to have you listen to DHM. And, and at this time, I would like to, to turn over the, the time to John Harvick from DHM. That's going to really walk through the study, what it means, and, and the process that we, that we walk through with it. John, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you all. I appreciate this opportunity to both work with your community and, and to share back with you what we heard. I am, was given presenter, so it looks like I can share my screen. Let me pull up. Hopefully you have a good screen in front of you where you can see this well. You all see this?
Yes.
Good. All right, so I'm gonna run through the results here of the survey. Before I do, I just introduce myself. I'm John Harvick, Senior Vice President at DHM Research. A DHM is an independent, nonpartisan, public opinion and policy firm. That means some different things, but I like to say it's our job to ask people what sort of communities they want to live in. And in this case, it's about public safety and fire protection as well as getting value for their tax dollars. We had an opportunity to talk to folks or voters in the community about these issues, and that's what this survey is about. As we go through this, it's, it's pretty short deck as a tight survey. So I think we have time and I'm happy to take questions along the way, so please chime in. I can't see everybody, so you'll just have to speak up, because I don't think I'll be able to see you. And I took something just in the, for the purposes of the presentation, a couple of things out here that just kind of text heavy that summarize some things that I'll say anyway. So if you have the full deck in front of you, I'm going to skip some slides that sort of repeat things that I'll say out loud. With that, I'm going to dive in, just to ground folks, what we tech were trying to do. We wanted to assess voter support for potential levy to fund fire and emergency services in Clackamas Fire District number one. We wanted to evaluate voter awareness of the district. And since, some, but, well, you see how we got there, but we, we were listening and, and looking for a couple of key things. And then test a few messages and support of a funding measure to assist voter communications. So it's pretty classic. We start the survey by asking how people are feeling about the community. We give people the ballot test. We asked some, some statements about, about the measure to see if people find that persuasive. And then we make sure we collect some demographic information. So pretty, pretty standard and, but pretty tight. It's a short survey. Just in terms of how we did this, this is what we call a, at DHM, we call hybrid survey. What we mean by that is we're using multiple approaches to be able to reach people. So we use both live interview phone calls, calling both landlines and cell phones. Most of those are cell phones nowadays, but we call both. And that is someone calling you up, making sure we're talking to the right person and administering the survey over the phone. Probably what you are all familiar with. We also reach people by text messaging. And so people are randomly selected to receive a text message with a link in the message where they can click on that link and take the survey on their smartphone, or they can click it to another device if they prefer, you know, their laptop or tablet or whatever it is that they, they prefer. We know that people just prefer to be contacted different ways. Some people really do still want to talk to somebody and other folks, gosh, they don't want to be bothered with the having to interact with somebody on the phone. And in order to ensure we did a good representative sample, it's important that we use multiple modes to be able to reach people, and that's what we've done here. So we feel really good about, about that. All the names and contacts come from the list of registered voters in the district pulled from the Secretary of State's. So we know exactly, you know, that, that they are voters in your community. In a voter list, we have additional information about the, about the individual. We know their name, for example. We know exactly where they live. We know their party registration. We know their vote history. That's how frequently they voted and which elections that they voted. We know their age. We know these different things that help ensure that we are reaching out to the right people. Still, even with that, we know that some folks just participate at different rates than others. So people with more education tend to participate survey research more than those with less. People with higher incomes tend to participate more than lower incomes, women more than men. There's some different characteristics that we know going into a, of any project, not just, not to something like this. It's, it makes it important for us to set quotas so that we go into the survey saying, are we expect in the electorate X percent to be men, X Y percent to be women, so many to be sixty-five and older, so many to be thirty-five to forty-four, whatever our characteristics are. And we, once we reach those quotas in our survey, then we put all our efforts into reaching people that we haven't heard from yet. By doing that, we end up with a sample profile that looks like an electorate in a May special election in an odd numbered year. So turnout in a special election, an odd numbered year, it can vary. But we looked at the last several special elections in Clackamas County and took the, kind of look at what's, what's the typical turnout in a special election and modeled it around that. It's difficult to know exactly what turnout it's going to be, but somewhere between twenty and thirty percent would be, would be typical. Now, that means we did not survey all adults in the district. We did not survey all registered voters in the district or all voters who voted in a general election in the presidential year. It's a much smaller, tighter electorate than that, so it's going to be older than the typical sort of, well, profile of adults in Clackamas County or all registered voters in, in the district. It'll be more partisan. Non-affiliated voters tend to turn out less in special elections and those who are registered with the party. They'll be, you know, more educated, older. And we, what we wanted to do is ensure that we're talking to people who are really truly likely to turn out to vote in the special election. So we're getting the most accurate read, best predictions when it happened in May. Uh, so sample size of three hundred has a margin error five point seven percent. Things might not always add up, because there is rounding. Before I go further, I just do want to make sure I'm, I'm describing what we did and who we talked to clearly. So if there are questions on methodology, I'll take those before I move on to the substance.
There's one question.
Sure, go for it.
A question in regards to the May election. Because it's not a general election, is it required at fifty percent of the voting, otherwise?
No, Oregon doesn't have a double majority rule anymore, so no. That used to be the case, but no longer. I forget, I forget how long it was, seven, eight years ago, something like that, the double majority rule.
Change for us. That one wasn't me. Thanks, John. Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. Well, if things come up, just, just shout them out and we can deal with them and get done. Oh, by the way, this was just done sort of right after Thanksgiving, first part of December, so these data are still good and fresh. All right, so classic way to start a survey like this is to ask, are things in the community heading in the right direction or are they off on the wrong track? We do that for a couple of reasons. One, we want an easy, community-oriented question to start the survey to signify to our participants, hey, this is about issues that matter. It's going to, you know, affects your community. This isn't about toothpaste. The other is, is that we just want to get, you know, a general feel. Are people happy, satisfied, angry, whatever it is? And we can do some analysis by how people are feeling about the community. And the typical way to ask that question are things heading in the right direction or they off on the wrong track. And so this is the, the results overall is on the left side here. So overall, thirty-two percent of voters said that the community is heading in the right direction, forty-four percent said that things are heading in the wrong track. I'll give you some context for that number in a second, but more people on the negative side of this, the wrong track than the positive, the right direction. Oregonians have been feeling pretty negative about things for the last, well, especially the last couple of years since twenty twenty. I'll show you that trend line. If we look at other individual communities in Oregon, this is maybe was about average, maybe a little bit below average or happen in some communities we've been in that are in the forties for that right direction number, but there's certainly some that have been much lower. So Portland's been eleven, twelve, thirteen, you know, Salem fourteen, fifteen, sort of that range. Eugene in the twenties, but there are some places like Benton County, Bend. There's some other places where it's been a little bit more positive, so maybe average, maybe a little bit lower. But part of the general trend where people are feeling pretty negative about things. You can see some of the demographic differences there by age. Or older voters are, are somewhat more positive, or higher income, excuse me, or lower income voters, excuse me, are somewhat more positive. Our college grads are somewhat more positive. You can see incorporated versus not incorporated. And then the, the one that we just see over and over again now, just the partisanship differences about things where, where Democrats and Republicans respond very differently. More and more, say, the last few years, we've seen non-affiliated voters look more like Republicans, at least in questions like this, than, than Democrats. If we take a step back and try to provide some context for this, this is, these are trend lines from DHM surveys over the course of the last twenty-five years. You know, we've been in business since nineteen seventy-seven, and my digital archives goes back to the nineties. And what I've done here has taken every single time we've asked a statewide survey if, if people in Oregon, if the state was heading in the right direction or off on the wrong track. This represents about two hundred and sixty or so surveys over the course of this period. And this, I've calculated the average for every year. The, the key here I want to show is, is one is that number at the far right, that twenty-four percent. That is the average of the surveys that we did in twenty twenty-two of Oregonians who said that the state was heading in the right direction. So Oregonians twenty-four percent, you know, Clackamas Fire District folks thirty-two percent, so a little bit more of that. But then I'll just sort of point out this just sharp decline really, you know, since twenty twenty. And, and there's lots of reasons which we could talk about probably another time about why that's the case. But there really was this, this, this categorical change, this qualitative change in how people were feeling in twenty twenty. And certainly, you know, the district isn't apart from that. It, it experiences some of that same negative, negative sentiment. That said, I didn't put it in here, but I did recently do an analysis that I talked to and I just presented to the, the Ben Fire. A couple of positive things. One, if we just look back at funding measures in Oregon since COVID, so since May twenty twenty, about sixty-five to seventy percent of local funding measures have passed in Oregon. Now, that's fire and road and schools and everything. But if, so that's since COVID, pre-COVID, it was about sixty percent of local funding measures were passing in Oregon. So this, we're in a relatively good period of voters saying, hey, I may be negative about the way things are going, but I'm still willing to make investments to community services that I value. The other, it's a specifically fire measures, more than seven and ten fire measures have passed since COVID. And so money measures in general have been doing pretty well, but fire in particular has been doing well. Now, that includes bonds and levies and small towns and, and big cities and renewals and, and new money. It's sort of mixed up, but, but just big picture, despite the negativity. Voters have still been willing to say yes to funding measures to support services that they value. Well, I guess I put that in here. This is, this is the trend on local funding measures going back to May twenty twenty. This, the gray number here is just the passage rates, the percentages of local funding measures that got a majority vote. And you can see we've been, you know, from as high as seventy-eight, I guess as low as sixty-seven, as high as seventy-eight. So it's been a, a nice, a nice streak of, of support for funding measures. Some context setting. Now I'll get into the district. One of the things we asked in the survey is just, heck, have you heard or read anything about the Fire District recently? About twenty percent half or twenty percent half, so one out of five. And it wasn't that much more among people who said that they planted to vote yes for the measure that we're going to ask about in a second versus those that said no. So awareness of the district or hearing or reading anything about the district had marginal or essentially no effect, no statistically significant effect anyway on, on how people were going to vote. And we went into this, you know, there's been some, some challenges with the district, and we're just basically trying to measure like, how much are people thinking about, aware of those sorts of challenges? When we followed up among those, among the twenty percent who said, yeah, I've heard or read or something about the district, we asked open-ended, hey, what is it that you've heard or read or seen about the district? So I have calculated these percentages based upon the, the denominator here is the three hundred people we talked to. So of all the people we talked to, you had to first say, yes, I've heard something, and then we asked what it was. Of all the people we talked to, four percent said that they've heard or read or something and it was about fiscal management. So that was twelve people out of the three hundred we talked to. So it's not something that is widely thought of, top of mind, part of the broad community conversation. Just four percent of the people we talked to. Three percent mentioned something about a potential funding measure. Three percent said something about burn days and fire management. Two percent said something about emergency response. Those are sort of things like, you know, they responded to an emergency in my neighborhood or something, something to that effect. And then one percent said that they thought heard something about a potential merger. So, you know, awareness about the district's not real high, awareness of fiscal issues are not high. And if awareness was high, it's usually because of some negative things. So I'm not sure if, when you see, foresee that twenty percent, if that causes you any heartburn, maybe you'd want it more, but I'll just tell you. It's, it's hard for people to keep track of all the things that are happening with government, particularly with all the different local governments that serve them. And so if people aren't thinking or hearing a lot about it, that's usually, usually because there aren't problems that they're aware of. But this is, to the extent that they are thinking about things, this is what it is. All right, and then we get to the support for the levy. We asked this two different ways. We started off by asking, we call the ballot language test, which is to write a, a question that uses language would be similar to what's in a ballot title. So the type of words that are used that have to be used, the length that would be in a ballot title. This is to give us our most conservative look at how people might vote. If they don't hear anything about the issue and they just open up their voter's pamphlet and make a decision based upon, or not even their voter's pamphlet, just open up their ballot and make a decision just on, just on that. So when we start that way, fifty percent said that yes, they plan to, or they vote for the measure. Thirty-eight percent said that they would vote against the measure. You can see this, the certain, twenty-four percent said, yes, I'm absolutely certain. You can't change my mind. I'm voting for it. Said yes, and then twenty-one percent said no. I pay attention a lot to these certains, and I always want to see the certain yes greater than the certain no. And we have that here. Now, I'll say fifty percent is a little bit lower than I would like to see. So we have a twelve percentage point difference between the yes and no. Show that there. But I would love it, I would love it if this sort of tested, you know, fifty-five, sixty percent, that's, that, that would make me feel more confident that things are going to move forward successfully. We do then follow up in the survey and say, well, is this going to cost a typical person or home, house, household X amount of dollars? I can't remember what the dollar amount is in my head right now, and here are some of the things that it's going to do. Once, so basically telling people in plain English what this is about, you know, but not trying to put the thumb on the scale about why they should vote for it, but just describe in plain English what it is. And then you see the support immediately jump up from fifty to sixty-one, and then the, the opposition goes from thirty-eight to twenty-eight. If, if a little bit of rounding here, but the, the yes-no advantage went from twelve to thirty-four. So now we're really in the territory of this is looking pretty good. So we have thirty percent certain yes, that certain no dropped to, to eighteen. So we have a twelve percentage point advantage here. You know, these numbers are looking really healthy, the types of numbers that we'd want to see. To give you a sense, there's a lot of numbers on here, but I just wanted to show you that support, that increase in support was broad. It didn't come from one or two segments of the community. It came from across different demographic groups. So here, I see, I broke it out by age and gender and income, education, area, and party. This is support for all these demographic groups and that are original, just the ballot language, just the title test. And then the percentage of support, when they got a little bit of information about what it's going to do. And you can see that there's just, you know, fairly substantial jumps across all demographic groups and support. You know, the, the lowest was among our non-affiliated voters, but they started relatively high. At fifty-five percent compared to, to other groups, so they had less potential for movement. See this big jump for Republicans, then they ended at forty-nine percent. But if you can get forty-nine percent of Republicans support, support a funding measure, that, that's pretty good in, in predicting success. So I just, this is just to show you, we see this broad increase in support across groups. And then just a, a couple more slides. We did give, present people with three different arguments in support of the, the measure, the potential measure. We wanted to understand here, do the types of arguments that might be marshaled, are they persuasive to people? And can we learn anything about what is going to be most effective? I'm, I'm not going to read all of these, but they were given the statement, then, then asked, is that a very good, good, a poor or very poor reason to support the measure? And may, just to focus on the one, first of all, you can just see with this green, they all tested well. So we have, you know, several arrows in her quiver. But the one that tested best was this statement, the levy will fund additional firefighters, first responders in all parts of the district. So this is inclusive. It's not one part or the other. No matter where you live, you could benefit. This will help prevent dangerous wildfires from spreading and ensure fast responses to medical emergencies. Now, this ensure fast responses, I've done a lot of fire and emergency response work over the years, and this quick response is just consistently one of the top messages. It can be deployed in different ways, but that theme is consistently one of the most persuasive themes when it comes to these issues. And although these differences aren't large, they're, they're, they're meaningful. And it was the, the most effective message here as well. And just to show you, it did well, this message, so this is our most effective message from the previous slide. I wanted to show you the groups that were less supportive of the funding measure, Republicans, non-affiliated voters, higher income voters, and those in that middle age, that forty-five to sixty-four-year-old group. That message resonated really well, but seven out of ten or, or more with all those sort of resistant groups, I'll, I'll call them for right now. And then if you look at even those who opposed the measure and that initial ballot test, a majority, fifty-six percent of those opponents. But hey, you know, I might be opposed, but that's, 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 that's a good reason. That's going to at least make me consider voting, voting yes on this. So it starts with, you know, fifty percent support, but fifty-eight versus thirty-eight opposition, so plus twelve. I'd like it to be a little bit better, but not, not a bad place to be. We see that big jump in support once we give people just the basic information about it. We see support increase across all our demographic groups. And we have messages that resonate really well with the community, including those who are more hesitant to initially support the levy. So these are the key findings, short survey, but I think points into a direction where, where things could be positive in May. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen and, and answer any questions you might have, and I can put my screen back on if there's a, a particular data question you'd like to look at, but I can't see otherwise.
I have a problem, John. I'm just curious in, in the testing model that you did on the demographics, people actually will tell you how much money they made?
I, I don't remember what the refuse was for that particular question, but it would be pretty typical to get refusals of about fifteen to eighteen percent. I'd have to look what it was here, but it's definitely the question where, where more people refuse to answer it than any other question. But it's, it's typically in that fifteen, eighteen percent of folks who say that they just don't want to give that answer. But that's, yeah.
And then I wanted to clarify something you said, make sure I heard correctly. So what number did you tell them their taxes would go up by?
I don't have the questionnaire in front of me. Hold on one second.
No, I'm asking him how, what they hold there, not what, not what ours is. So did you say it's going to go up, you know, fifty-two cents? I mean, because it's really important to me that there, that people understand that this is an increase. It's easy to say, oh, yeah, I think we should have more money.
Yep.
Just not my money.
We're looking up the.
Right, so the, here's the, here's the question. Should Clackamas Fire District one issue a local levy option of fifty-two cents per one thousand dollars of assessed property value to fund enhanced firefighter staffing and equipment for emergency welfare response beginning in twenty twenty-three?
Okay, thank you. That's why I want to know.
Yeah, they were told, they were told the rate.
They told us that fifty-two cents, okay. That's, I have anybody else got any comments? Okay, back to you.
Awesome. John, thank you so much. Really, really appreciate. This is, this is one of those things that we were really wanting before. We were going to be considering to bring this forward to you, the board meeting to refer to the voters. Is having that quantitative, quantitative piece. We've reached out to neighborhood association, the neighborhood associations. We've reached out to the business community. We've reached out to the business alliances and we've, and we've gone across the whole entire district to try to, to engage the community as much as we possibly could. So that when we come to you in January, we were arming you with enough data and information. And this, to me, is, is the, the the fruits of the labor. This, this to me is, is that, that nudge that we needed as far as the quantifiable data to reflect the Fire District asking you to refer to, as the board, to refer this to taxpayers. I, I, I appreciate the transparency in the figures, John, and, and the information that you presented to us. Is there any questions that you have as a board? To me, the big purpose for this right here is, is to get you the quantitative results and, and, and then be able to answer any of your questions. And then moving from here, I, I have just a final, final statement post. Any questions from you?
Not really a question, chief. I, I guess I would just say for mine, when I, when I got these results, I would please to see the increase when people, you know, you get their first answer and then they found some information and the support grew as much as it did. The other thing that I thought was really positive is the, the kind of the three questions that they formulated for explaining to people what we were trying to do were, were for all intents and purposes, a first stab at asking people. We're telling them, here's, here's what we're trying to do, and each of those three came back with seventy-five percent plus. Yeah, that's a, that's a good reason. And for myself, knowing that it was just part of our first stab at, at how do you explain things to have that kind of support, I thought was a really positive that we took out of this.
Thank you. So I, I'm trying to get, the number really doesn't, doesn't matter, but I'm just trying to get how many results we have from the qualitative study, which was the survey that we did. We have the quantitative, that's what you heard. The qualitative, the, the community would feed that would, would fill those out, and that would go directly to, to coastline. With, with the data that we have before us, with the community engagement that we've, that we've done till this point, I, I just, what, 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 as your fire chief, I'm, I'm going to be at the next board meeting asking you to, to, to refer this to the, to the voters. So I just would like to give you just a heads up, that's what I'm going to be coming to you to ask for, for May twenty-three ballot measure. Is there anything? Is there anything from the group that's been participating in this uh that that I have missed or that that you would like to to share prior to closing this this section?
Uh Nick, I can add that I have, I've learned that actually the qualitative survey is closing tomorrow.
Thanks.
So it is, it was still active right now. And as of uh right now, we have around seventy-five responses that came back open-ended from the community.
Perfect.
And uh according to Lindsay, we are trending fairly reflective of what we found in the quantitative surveys, so no surprises.
Perfect.
Coming from that. And that's really the opportunity for, you know, somebody who's closely following the district, who is watching what we're doing, who has opinions to express on this, that's an opportunity where that type of person could engage with us and provide that sort of feedback. And the fact that we're not seeing any substantially concerning feedback or oppositions in origin. Yeah.
Seventy-five out of how many?
That was blanketed everywhere. So yeah, so we we took, we put links to the letters to the community groups, to the business alliances, to the rotaries, social media, and it's can't force anybody to fill out the links. It's just who chose to fill out the links.
It would be very hard to say what percentage of the people responded.
Oh, exactly. It's not a quantity. It isn't scientific in any way. It is, it is purely anecdotal, and it's a it's primarily for public engagement. It's it's a chance for us to be able to listen to the community through open-ended response vehicles, uh you know, rather than work that John is doing, which is scientific and quantitative.
You know, and well, I was just gonna ask, so is the next step, at what point will we be presented with uh what's the suggested rate that the committee came up with? What will that do, you know, position-wise and?
That would be, that would be at the board meeting.
Okay.
As as I'm asking you to refer.
We'll get it ahead of time so we can.
You have the packet ahead of time, a hundred percent, and uh even the ballot language would will be uh will be what we will be bringing forward to you as well. It's important to understand that we will be at a very high level as far as it's it's the the, much like we've been sharing with the with the public, it's it's sixty-two firefighters staffing station twelve and station thirteen and quick response events. That that we will be presenting to you. So just to get that that number and what it looks like, and and it's the fifty-two cents per thousand, but but
I understand sixty-two firefighters and personnel and session one-one thirteen.
Yes.
But how do we quantify quicker service? What 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 makes it quicker service?
It's the lighter resource apparatus. It's the quicker uh ability that that vehicle has to get around uh traffic. As you slow down a fire engine, starting it back up to gain speed, it's just, it's it's like driving your your smaller vehicle compared to a big old semi truck. That's that's the quicker unit, and it's just, it's a lot of resource. Um it's the most cost-effective and efficient way for the lower emergent, non, you know, the the non, non-emergent low-acuity calls. Versus sending a ladder truck or a fire engine.
I think the question is, how are you going to establish that it is quicker? You can't, you're just gonna say it's quicker because it's smaller? And I think for fulfillment purposes to meet what you say, if you're gonna say it in public, it's gonna be faster. If we don't keep records and we don't giving out to the public, how are they gonna know that we actually did it quicker and faster? Just because a smaller vehicle, which is a really great idea, and the public will love that because they've been asking for that for decades. Don't send me the fire engine, send me the little stuff. And that's that's a positive step forward. But if you're gonna promise it's gonna be faster, you better be able to prove this.
Yes, that that's what that was exactly my question, yeah.
Or you start making promises you can't sustain you, because they'll remember, and when it comes up for renewal, they may be a problem.
Chief, right. Okay, hit on that. Please. One of one of the big things is that having that resource available keeps the heavy asset available. So we're we're talking about when we what we've learned through these public forums and uh and actually having the visual displays uh Saturday in Oregon City, is that the conversation was a lot about the number of calls that we run, the number of low-acuity calls, and having the uh the four-person apparatus, heavy asset available for the for the true emergencies, not the low acuity. So a faster response also dives into if that vehicle is out on a low acuity, the next available rig is coming from another planning zone away. And so that time uh differs as well. The other part of it is that our rural stations that we don't staff, we know that it's a significant drive out to station twelve and station thirteen from station eleven to station ten. So I think that's part of the equation too, is that um we're talking about taking thousands of calls off the board for the heavier assets to keep them available, therefore making a
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, because it's not a micro, it's not a a siloed. The quicker response unit is a piece to the this is a quicker response and a more efficient response package that we're bringing forward.
I think an important thing that you mentioned, Dan, is that you've got established that there is a need out in those rural stations. If they go out nine times a month, that's their, that's the response rate.
Right.
That's all they're called upon to do. Are you gonna justify it in terms of four people out there who are gonna sit around doing nothing? What for most of days a month?
There won't be four people out there.
Well, there might, because that's what we're saying, we're going to staff twenty-four, seven.
Not at twelve and thirteen, twelve and thirteen or three and two.
Three, yeah.
But that's not what we've been saying. That's not the PR piece. I'm saying that you gotta be, we haven't said anything to anyone yet. Other than that, that's exactly what we've been saying.
Marilyn, we haven't said that we're gonna staff station twelve and thirteen with four persons staffing at all. What we've said is that we are going, we are looking at sixty-two firefighters with an increase of ten to eleven fire stations at four-person staffing. Where those four-person staffing are going has not been determined yet. We're, we are locking that into data to back our our decisions. And and at this point, what we really need to focus in on, and what the board needs to focus in on, and what the community needs to focus in on is sixty-two more firefighters to help with the wildfire threat that we are having, as well as the increased demand for services. And it's a wall-to-wall service level increase. That is the message that I want the board to understand and our communities to understand. That is what we're asking for. And in that sixty-two is staffing two fire stations that currently are not staffed, and they will be staffed with a paramedic twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, which I has like, I don't remember the last time. I'm just gonna look to you, Jim, when Parks was uh staffed.
Yeah, our parks staff station themselves, and then when they merged, we staffed it with a two-person company forty hours a week for two years, let's say, two years, and then we dropped it.
Yeah.
Station twelve, a lot of people don't know, was staffed by the old district fifty-four for many years with one career per shift and two students.
Yep.
The students were required to work twenty-four, forty-eight, you know, had to find their leave, so.
Yeah.
Up until the merger in eighty-eight.
Yeah. So that's, that's really, we we can really get into the to the to the the weeds with what this is. What I want us to focus on is at a little bit of a elevated level, what this is actually meaning to the citizens. You're spot on, being able to prove that that data that, hey, there has been a a decrease in in or a a quicker response. Right, right now, uh we know across the nation based on numbers, the lighter vehicles get to incidents quicker. It's it's, that data is there. Until we implement this plan, I'm not gonna be able to give you those those hard numbers. But we know quantifiably that that's, is that even a word, quantifiably? I might have just made up a word. It is now. Uh we we have that data across the nation where this model has worked. And the fact that it's taking twenty-five to three thousand calls off of the heavier assets, which normally would be on the call then getting a second hit, we know that now by having that vehicle there, we're responding to that next emergency quicker for the second two hits. So.
Yeah, and chief, I have one more point on that as well, and I I love the question, Marilyn, is it um it's, it holds us accountable to what we're saying to the public.
Yeah.
Um another part that is is hardest for the public to understand is what an effective response force is. And when we say quicker response time, if we have our rural station staffed and we have most of our other apparatus staffed with four, we get that effective response force quicker. So that's the number of firefighters that it takes to house fire, to assign every position and fill all those critical tasks. That's also the quicker that is gonna improve drastically with this. So um I think there's a lot to it when we say, and when we're talking about smaller vehicles, four-person staffing rural, but it's just kind of the whole big picture. And you're a hundred percent right, it's how we message that. And is it making sense? And I think this is really good that we actually got pretty good feedback on what that, on the question that we ask and the information that we give on what the response is.
Yeah.
Because what you mean by responsive feed or dis efficiencies may not be what people translate to their lives. What they're thinking of is, I want them there five minutes ago because my husband had a heart attack.
Yeah.
And I don't care what rolls up here. I want it to be quality people who get your staff as possible.
Yes.
And so I, I mean, I think in the messaging, you wanna be cautious to not get too fiery, you know?
Yeah.
Where we all get into your nomenclature and it's, wow, we all know what it is.
But I, on the, on the other hand, I agree. When we say we are going to add a quicker service, of course, we are going to support that with some statistics or data or our information. But when you say we are going to hire sixty-two new firefighters to how four people stationed, but we want to make sure there is no assumption made a session twelve and thirteen are going to be part of that four-person, that that's gonna be. Not everybody want to go into details and learn about, pay attention completely. They might not understand. Uh that's something that I I want to be careful with. And we say when we have sixty-two new firefighters, that doesn't mean every single session, including. And that may not apply to very many people who are not familiar with session twelve and thirteen.
Yes.
But that will be sensitive to the people who are in there who are early. I think, why do we need four people? That will be something we have to address that so that assumption is not made.
Yeah.
You know, if I could just interject, you know, in terms of the four-person staffing and the broad communication, there are some things that are inside baseball, they're operational, that that it isn't that they aren't important, or that we shouldn't be clear, transparent, and accountable to those things. But it's not relevant information for the average homeowner who, you know, their perspective is, well, we need to give you is the resources that you need, and then we expect you to do well with those resources and show up when my husband's having a heart attack and and I actually learned through this process about four-person staffing for the first time, why when I was seventeen years old and my house burned to the ground, why the first engine that showed up wasn't able to actually go inside the home, and that being sort of question that has been lingering in my mind for twenty years. And um and and so I think that I can extend that same kind of anecdote to the rest of the public, which is what what they care about tangibly is is there, do we have kind of competitive response rates here? Right? Am I, based on where I live geographically, going to get adequate service, and am I getting the same level of service that somebody over here is getting, right? So the equity piece is really important geographically. And also, the public is very in tune to the risk of wildfires right now. And they understand that wildfire risk is something that impacts all of us. Um you can't, you know, after the twenty-twenty wildfires, you can't say that wildfires are just a rural issue anymore, right? Because they impact the whole broader community. And it's clear that this district is willing to invest in those things. So when we surveyed, D H M didn't even ask a a single question about four-person staffing. Instead, what the words that we used were that it would fund file additional firefighters and first responders in all parts of the district, and that will help prevent dangerous wildfires from spreading and ensure fast responses to medical emergencies. And based on that statement, eighty percent of of the the people who were surveyed said that's a really good reason to support that. So it would be, uh you know, our recommendation that the district takes that same high-level approach in communicating with the public. So that the language that we're using is accessible, while at the same time um applying really uh critical accountability measures into and metrics in the levy that you can use to track and hold, you know, hold yourselves accountable over five years, knowing that if the district doesn't hold itself accountable, somebody else will. And it'll probably be the voters. So I just wanted to interject.
Thank you.
But that's a good point you brought out. A person who is not that familiar, you have a testimony. When you're seventeen, you've had that experience. So you know that. But I think this process, what we are doing, we need to be cognizant of bring the points that our red citizen would know. So it's an educational process, not only marketing for a levy, but also educational piece, why, where it can be done, not everywhere it can be done, but there are places that might be needed, as those kind of information will be valuable.
I agree with your points on the four-person staffing, where they get staffed, probably irrelevant. I think it's kind of a high level left to, you know, the chiefs in the committee to decide that. But I think having two rural stations staffed that haven't been staffed, I think is a big point, you know, that could be stated, because people will understand that, oh, we didn't know that we had two stations that there hasn't been anyone there for twenty years. Other than volunteers, you know, we've got to give them credit, they've done their best, you know, to staff on nights and weekends over the years, but even we're having difficulty maintaining those numbers now. But I think those two stations, I think that is a big point at least to me.
That's also, it's important when we are talking about state and one-one curtain has not been a man, but we also, we need to do statistics, why we need to give now. That's going to be very important part two. Not supporting just because it has not been a scenario.
Great questions. Thank you, Ron. Is there anything else regarding this?
No.
The big thing for us, we just wanted to bring to you today, everything that we said we were going to when we initially brought to you this concept, and we originally brought to you the concept is that we're gonna engage the communities, we're gonna engage the public. We're gonna do a quantitative and a qualitative study, and and we have done that. We have, we have held our end, and we have gotten out of this really good data that supports our next request, which will come to you in the board meeting at the end of January. This shows support of this for the community. A lot of positive feedback.
Okay, there's any notes on that? You want to move on to your evaluation?
Yeah, we will. Thank you, John, so much. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, so at at this point, um we're gonna move on just to uh button up the last work session that we had as far as the uh the fire chief's um annual eval. In fact, Chris, you were welcome. You're good.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
That's impressive.
Appreciate you, Chris. So we had six minutes left on the last work session, and we were able to get everything out as far as the the annual, my annual review. And so um based on that, you have in front of you what the uh survey will look like to send to strategic partners. And I was curious if there's any uh inputs uh that you have regarding this topic.
No, I I thought it was fine, and I took a look at it.
I couldn't, I couldn't find any slipping to add to.
Yeah, I like it. And the process is good.
Yeah.
Awesome.
So you're taking this all across the board, as selected people?
Yeah, yeah, Arrow, Arrow has a list, and she will be submitting that. And um those results will go straight back to you as far as your overall processes, and I will see them after you see them.
Okay.
So it won't be like I'm I'm looking at it and giving you the good ones. So I don't know from Arrow to you. Um in Arrow, you had one twenty-five?
Um that's what I saw on the job forum, but I didn't analyze any of it, so maybe some of those were tests.
Okay, cool. Last topic, sorry, hundred twenty-five was what they have for qualitative piece.
There's, there's been quite a, uh I, and I know there've been quite a few people who looked at it. That's actually the number that filled it out.
Yeah.
A number of people who have clicked on the link and have looked at it, this has been, like last year, several thousand. Which, you know, they didn't fill it out, but also nobody took the opportunity. You gave somebody a microphone and they could take broadside if they wanted to and they didn't, so.
That's the thing with the quantitative, there's this this in the thirty thousand range of of to get it completely through, it's sort of that number.
So then chief, in terms of timing on it, are you then looking at February?
I would love for February, we will submit this out once you as a board say, yeah, this looks good. Ariel will send send this out with the uh uh return by what what would be good for you to be able to fill out your piece on the uh the other survey form, this which is just a rinse and repeat of what we had.
To get it to the board by the February meeting?
Yeah, have the board be able to um to be able to have the survey P, or not the survey, I'm mixing the work sessions here. The the results from the uh fire chief eval.
Probably give that until the first week of February.
Yeah. Would that be enough time for you to fill out your piece on the uh the other, the other form?
You ready?
Yeah.
I think so.
I think so.
I can write leaves much be desired pretty quick.
Sweet. Yeah, so that would be, that would be great if we could, if we could have that at our for February board meeting.
Okay, good. Anything else?
But I want to show my appreciation for, I don't know if Marilyn and Jim and Jay has been able to attend. I know I have not attended this community um survey programs. Chris has been very active and thank you for representing and taking the time.
It's been a pleasure. I've gotten to know some of the guys that they still let me drive a fire engine. They were letting little kids climb on the things last Saturday and they were watching me like a hawk.
But they didn't block.
They thought they thought he'd be excited.
I didn't get close enough to get tackled, Marilyn. I'm pretty sure Steve had some people watching me, ready to take me off the knees by when you drive receipt.
Hey, Chris, Jay here, you know, we could, um I could meet you at Chambers Motors, maybe we could get you to drive a fire engine out there.
Well, Jay, do you have things like that?
No, I've been listening to everything, it's just taking it all in, so.
I I didn't, I didn't see him on either, so that's great.
I'm here.
He's been incognito. Nice job, Jay.
Yeah, I got those ninja skills working for me right now.
Well, you are all in black, so.
Yeah, Marilyn, you uh you were three before.
Yeah, I was at three of them.
And um it was really good fun to see that Oregon City.
The Oregon City one was fabulous. I mean, it was like, maybe we should have done those for the other ones too. Nobody wanted to hear a presentation, but they all want to come at it.
That's right.
Firecrack.
That's right.
And we've also discussed that going forward, is that could be one of the, I think, part of the community education that we do on this is just start doing town halls like that, because those five or six boards and handing out those little firemen hats. Yeah, I still have mine.
You have a town hall, uh open house? That's it, that's what it was. We had, we had the option to to go through and and uh have some some uh fire dimension education, things of that nature. And then see the the fire engine, the ladder truck and uh and then had uh an area where there was the levy conversation. And so it just was a really
Five or six.
Yeah.
It was fun, you're coming to high points.
Yep, and everybody that came in cycled through, it was just, they cycled through, talked to us, it was just, it was great. It was really, Mayor was there.
Yeah, when I was there, I actually asked about the levy, I mean, yes, the staff were wearing their big green buttons, just asking about the levy, but um it, people did.
Raymond was there, you know, so it was, it was awesome. It really was.
Okay, all right, anything else for the?
Those of you don't know, this is Raymond Grindelman, he's a publisher of the, editor of the Clackamas Review.
That works as a news too, right?
Okay, thank you for the introduction.
Awesome. Okay, then, everything, no, there is course no action to be taken at a work session, no further matters to be heard. The meeting is adjourning at three fifty eight.